Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for the instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the One or All people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. For tonight's prayer, do we have Pastor Aaron Donoghue here from L3 Church at Greata? Please come forward Pastor Donoghue to the lectern to lead us in prayer. Councillors, please stand.
Thank you. Heavenly and holy Father, worthy are you of all praise and glory, we pray for the council of the city of Cessnock, its members, officers, staff and all their families and support networks. May you grant them your peace and wisdom for the work and positions they carry in serving this great community of the Cessnock region. Direct their work and influence their decisions, Lord, to the advancement of your glory and for the safety and welfare of this city, so that the peace, happiness, truth, justice and sound development may be continued among us. Lord, we pray for all business determined here today and for all ideas and innovations to continue and increase so that this city is developed and progressed with wisdom under your mighty hand. These things we ask through Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Donoghue. Apologies and leave of absence. We have a leave of absence granted for councillor Jackson. Councillor Dunn?
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor. I'd like to request a leave of absence for the meeting of the eighteenth of October as I will be away for a conference at work and I can't attend.
So a leave of absence has been requested by councillor Dunn for the meeting on the eighteenth. Move councillor Moores, seconded councillor Hawkins. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Confirmation of the previous minutes, so the meeting on the sixteenth of August, move that way councillor Sanders, seconded councillor Dunn. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Confirmation of the extraordinary meeting on the thirtieth of August, moving that way councillor Sanders, seconded councillor Hill. All those in fav... Sorry councillor Olsen?
Do you think, because apparently there was a risk assessment done in May on the meeting room and on this meeting, extraordinary meeting, you denied entry of a lot of people. Can you explain to these people why they weren't let in?
Have you to refer to the general manager or the director? Yeah, the question, well, I think, yeah, the general manager can explain, but I think there was advice out after that meeting and I don't know that this has anything to do with the...
There was no advice given to me. I was supposed to be confidential, I was told.
Sorry, on the night there was a miscount of chairs. There was eight chairs missing from what's been allowed.
No, that was incorrect. There was more than eight removed.
So councillor Olsen, you're...
And people were incorrectly advised they couldn't stand at the back of the room when the risk assessment says ten people could stand at the back of the room.
Yeah, so when was the risk assessment done? In May? Well, you don't know. You have to take that on notice. So the risk assessment was done in May and we waited till that meeting to stop people from coming in and you removed too many chairs and no one apologised to these people that turned up on the night. I think it's very poor leadership.
We're moving with the minutes, so they've been moved and seconded. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Ms Saval. I'd like to declare an interest in report number BN fifteen twenty twenty-three, report titled Headengreata Road Rehabilitation Additional Scope. A non-procurnary interest less than significant conflict for the reason that my residential address is in the vicinity.
Councillor Burke?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. PE thirty-one two thousand and twenty-three, the Cessnock Stomp Festival. I declare a procurnary interest for I am the organiser of that event. I will leave the chamber and take no part in decision-making.
Okay. No further disclosures, no petitions, public address. Mr Anthony Frew is here. Come forward, Mr Frew to the left turn. Mr Frew is addressing council in relation to report PE thirty twenty twenty-three for a development application. Mr Frew, you'll have three minutes to address council.
Good evening Mayor, councillors and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the development of the childcare centre on the corner of Rawson and Allworth Streets in Currie. I live in Edward Street, Currie, just around the corner from where this is proposed to be built. Let me first say, I've got no problem with developing community facilities and services and I have no real problem with this facility going in there. My major concerns, three of them, but principally all related to the same thing, is that I think there's been, there hasn't been a broad enough consultation for those residents around the area that are going to be affected. This allows me then to think that maybe there isn't the correct infrastructure going to go in and potentially, this is all part and parcel of the move from Currie, from a village into what's becoming a dormitory suburb. So if we're going to be doing this in the future, or this type of thing in the future, I think some of the, some of the local residents, like myself, been there for, well, in the area for more than forty years, certainly there in Currie for thirty years or more, and I just think when the people who did this work for the developer, they only looked at sixteen houses around that particular precinct. If you look at it from about four blocks around, there's at least a hundred and fifty properties there and most of those would be older residents like myself. The first concern is safety. The inflow of traffic from there is going to increase, both in the mornings and afternoons, people dropping off and picking up their kids. Many of those will have children at the primary school, I imagine. Currently, there is virtually no traffic safety mechanisms around that intersection. The forty K zone stops at the corners of each of the primary, each corner of the primary school. There's no pedestrian crossing down there and there's been no reference to the activities or the commercial activities of BWS. Now, Friday afternoons is probably their busiest time and the traffic flow there is substantially increased over that two-hour period between two and four PM. And yet I see nothing in the assessment documents that have been tabled here to indicate that anyone's paid any attention to that. So primarily, what I'm saying is safety. Do we plan properly for these facilities now and into the future? And do we consult broadly enough? And I would ask you to consider that in light of the approval for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Question councillor Painter. So just a statement for you.
So thank you for coming in Tony and addressing council. It's good to see members of the community being engaged and I appreciate that. So I spoke to the director earlier and a couple of councillors. So what I'd like to do is add a dot point if I can to the submission, but first of all, so just primarily your concern is safety. You'd like to, if possible, see a safety crossing, extensions of the speed zone and possibly a speed hump to slow the traffic down.
Yeah, look, I'm not, I'm not certain what other mechanisms there might be to control traffic, particularly speed. As I said, the forty K zones are only around the primary school. They don't go past even BWS. They don't go to Hampden Street, which is where you've still got that, that new childcare facility, which I believe now has got a hundred kids in it. So people, when they're dropping off and picking up their kids from the primary school down that section, have no other mechanism to control flow of traffic. There's a stop sign on Allworth Street, corner of Rawson Street, but there's no pedestrian crossing, there's no speed humps, there's nothing to slow the traffic, except for the fact that people think it's a sixty or fifty K zone. In, in fact, in those morning and afternoon periods, it's forty and you don't know until you come up to that intersection because there's nothing telling you.
Yeah. I can see the potential of like a parent dropping off a child at the preschool and then have a second child in the car and they've got to walk to the public school because they may be running late or lack of parking. So I can see those issues. So if we could add a dot point to have the traffic committee consider.
We'll do that in the minutes I will finish and if there's no more questions of Mr Frew, we'll thank Mr Frew for your presentation.
Thank you.
And so we'll now move to dealing with the report PE thirty twenty twenty-three. So councillor Painter is going to move that way with a dot point three that says that council requests the traffic committee, consider...
An extension of the forty kilometer hour speed zone during the normal drop-off hour. Safety, school safety zones?
Safety improvement. So consider safety improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, as a result of the, the development.
Yeah.
That would go through the traffic committee and come back. So we need a second for that. Councillor Hill's happy to second. You comfortable?
Yeah.
With that? Yeah. Okay, is there any debate on that item? No, no debate. We'll put the item. All those in favour? It's unanimous. We'll now move on to the consideration and adoption of all reports by Englobo. Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to items GMU six twenty twenty-three, Cessnock City Council Union Picnic Day, GMU seven twenty twenty-three, proposal to close council offices between Christmas and New Year, CC fifty-five twenty twenty-three, revised public art policy, CC fifty-nine twenty twenty-three, related parties disclosure policy, CC sixty-one, investment report August twenty twenty-three, CC sixty-two, resolutions tracking report, NWI twenty-nine twenty twenty-three, the naming of council assets policy, that council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
See what they seconded councillor Sanders. No debate. We'll put those items. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Moving on to Meryl Minnetts. I'll move Meryl Minnetts, MM six twenty twenty-three regarding the pool family free days and entry vouchers. This is a continuation of what we, we've done last year, which flowed on from the previous term of council around a number of pool free days. The aim is to get people out and active using our fantastic pools. So the request is also adding on an additional point this year to make sure that these continue into the planning works and budgets for future years ahead. So I'll move that way. No debate. Put the item. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Moving motions of urgency. No motions of urgency. Now move to report PE thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Wait for councillor Burke. So someone moving that way councillor Grine, seconded councillor Moores. Speaking on that councillor Grine?
Yeah, thank you, Ms Saval. I just wanted to make a point of saying that back in twenty sixteen, we had twelve thousand attend in this particular event. We're now up to twenty five thousand. We support like a hundred and sixty-five stalls for this event now. It's supporting local businesses, many community groups for this, all these people involved. And I strongly support council in, in making this donation in kind. We currently have four point one million dollars in economic development dollars coming into the community from this event. So I just wanted to let, you know, the Cessnock people know that we, we as council strongly support the Stomp Festival and what it's doing for our community, especially the fact that it allows, you know, somewhere that you can take your kids, it's free for the day. And here can do something for the day that doesn't involve putting in big dollars. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Moores?
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree with this because it's not just like the Stomp Festival and people just squashing grapes and all that. There is Jobseek, there is Job Centre people along there that's got stalls and they will be, there'll be jobs on offer and people able to put the name down to be shown how to address an interview and all that. So there is a good amount of thing for everybody there, not just fun and games and squash the grapes. I agree with this.
Yeah. No further debate. We'll put the item. All those in favour? It's unanimous. We can just let... Okay, now moving on to report PE thirty-two twenty twenty-three, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Speaking on that councillor Hill?
Thank you, Ms Saval. Just a few comments here from this DCP plan coming back to us at council. Unfortunately, this is, this is a quite important sort of top-down overview of what we are looking to see from this development. That, you know, it's a little ways out yet at the moment, but we will see it as a major growth area in the ten to twenty years to come out here at the old hydro site and out into Lockford. And unfortunately, in relation to that, this, the submissions to this report were only about, about six or so, which I know I attended one of the public drop-in sessions and, and council does, you know, has been going the, a couple of extra steps to ensure that we have these different options for submissions. You know, a lot of people can submit online or you can drop in. I know a number of older, an old gentleman from Headengreata come and spoke to me at the drop-in session. But it's disappointing a little bit to see the smaller submissions than this and I think we'd like, I'd like to see a sort of push as we go forward with consultation for items related to this quite important area. When we get to the stage of any voluntary planning agreement or looking at the development applications on a more precise level in future, I'd love to see some more attention from the community as well. And I'll do what I can to make sure people are aware it's happening and to make sure we get everything we need done correctly out here. Headengreata and Cliffley have seen a history of poor planning and development over a number of smaller DAs over the last twenty years. And I hope that this, the future of this hydro site out there can be lessons, can show the lessons learned from those mistakes.
Councillor Judd?
Thank you, Ms Saval. I'm just wondering what council's plan is for the flooding. In this report, it talked about some flooding issues that they noticed. And I just was wondering what council's plans are to address that, just because we've had a few developments that have gone ahead in, in our LGA that have ended up with massive flooding issues. And I just don't want to agree to another development that was going to have major, sorry, development issues, flooding issues.
Director?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll, I'll address that in a more general way and possibly if you need more detail, can pass it on to the manager. But yeah, flooding is certainly a topical issue and the state government is imposing more stricter requirements as the years go by. And in fact, it's a major, major matter of discussion with the major developer on hydro at the moment. In fact, we're having a meeting with them tomorrow about this very issue. I think it's safe to say the state government is taking a more conservative approach to flooding. So it's making it tougher for developers because we're finding that, you know, the one in a hundred year events happen all the time. And so, you know, the free board that they've given in the past just hasn't turned out to be sufficient. But of course, as you'd expect, that means that there's less and less developable land if you've got more of it subject to floods. And that makes it more expensive to develop the land. And so naturally, there is some pushback from the developers over that. And there's a lot of argument over what the flood level should be. Unfortunately, that means it ends up being really a discussion between flood experts, engineering experts, hydrology experts. It's beyond my level of understanding, but that's where it sort of gets to. And all I can say is that certainly in this particular item, that was one of the major issues from Transport for New South Wales. They were very concerned about flood access because they accept that floods will happen. And so they want to make sure that, that residents can, can get safely away from those flooded areas if possible. So that is something that has changed in this application. But I, I think it would be safe to say that the science is saying that these flood events will happen more and more often and there will be stricter and stricter controls on where you can build, which means it will become more expensive to build in the areas where you can build. So it's a general response, Mr Mayor, but...
Thank you, Director. That was good. My, my biggest concern is we have one issue that's quite known for as soon as there's a tiny little bit of rain, the street floods and a few cars have gone under constantly at the bottom of Antsy Street in, I think it's Akira. No, no Akira. Anyway, down the bottom of Antsy Street in that new subdivision that happened about twelve years ago. And I just don't want to support a report that's going to do the exact same thing. If you're meeting with them tomorrow, what, if we vote yes on this report tonight, what, does that have an impact to the meeting tomorrow? Like, should this report go next month?
Director?
Mayor, no, the, the discussion tomorrow is more about future activities that are going to be happening out there. And really, it's about what is the extent of the areas that are subject to flooding. It's basically, you know, our flooding engineers say one thing, the developers' flood engineers say something different. Ultimately, if we can't come to a resolution, we'll end up going to court, getting resolved that way. But we're really just identifying those broad areas of land where certain development can happen. And of course, industrial land isn't so critical for flooding because generally you're not having lives at risk, whereas residential areas, you know, you need to be a bit more conservative. So no, tomorrow's, tomorrow's meeting is a little bit separate to this one.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Grine?
Thank you, Ms Saval. I too second councillor Hill. I'm very disappointed with only six submissions from when we went out to community consultation for such a massive scale project that's happening in Currie. I encourage all of the, the Currie locals to come and have a look at what's actually going on out there because it's very, very big and it's going to have a huge impact on Currie township itself. So I'm, I'm in support of this. This has been in planning for quite a while now and happy to give it the tick of approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no further debate. We'll put the item. Those in favour? Councillor Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sanders, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Saval. Those against? Councillor Judd? I'll declare it carried. Moving on to report PE thirty-three twenty twenty-three, move that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Ms Saval. Staying very geographically close to the previous report we just moved. This, it's good. I was quite glad to see this comeback. This come to us at last month's or two months ago's meeting with the hydro power plant that's being, oh sorry, the development by Snowy Hydro out there, the gas power plant at Currie. And they have come to the table to give us some contribution to the back to the community for, for building that power plant out there. And originally, the planned use of that, of that money, I think was going to have a bit, bit of an ineffective use, sort of being used to acquire a bit of this rail spur line that we might have made into a pathway in future. But now this report has come back to us and we've had a chat with them and we've mentioned to them that we have a, you know, a major netball court refurbishment plan getting underway in Currie. And we'd love to see this money go towards that. And I'm so very glad to see that they're happy to have their contribution be used for such an important supporting feature in Currie, Currie.
Okay, councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to know while we're passing off so many things to the GM to delegate, I feel like the GM is busy enough and just tonight alone, there is another report again wanting to let him sort it out. My issue on this is, as a councillor, we don't have access to a lot of information, unlike a lot of the public would think. Unless it's a report or sent to us in an email, I have to request the information, just like a resident. And sometimes I get the information and sometimes I can't have access to the information. So for that reason, I just can't vote yes, even if it is seen as good practice, because I know what will happen. I will not be given all the information when requested. I know it'll be told it's operational and therefore I have no reason to have it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Judd. If I can just clarify on that. I think the, the delegation to the general manager is to sign. So council's making the decision now on the, the, like, on the, on the agreement, but someone has to sign it on behalf of council. And so then it becomes the general manager has to sign it, physically sign it on behalf of, of council rather than, because we don't. So if that helps clarify that. Yep. Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This, this is one of these large planning agreements that we're entering into that's going to have a long-term effect on council. And I guess coming from the issues we had with Billbird North, my biggest concern is, yes, we're going to put this out onto exhibition for twenty-eight days and we're going to allow the general manager to execute the planning agreement. But the conversation around the milestones and council's capacity to actually deliver our own milestones along with this planning agreement, I just, I'd like to get a comment from either the general manager or the director with regard to our capacity to be able to tick off on those milestones from our end.
Director?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry, this, this report sort of goes hand in hand with the previous report you got a couple of months ago. And so it didn't, it hasn't covered all that detail, but this is a fairly unique planning agreement in that you generally don't get a state government or state government approved development paying a contribution at all. So fortunately, my strategic planning manager was able to go in and negotiate close to a million dollars, which is sort of unheard of getting, you know, it's normally the private developers that pay it, not, not these larger organisations. So it is a bit of one, bit of a, you know, you could call it a windfall if you like. And because it's specifically for one project, in this case, they've just said, we're happy for that money to go towards the Booth Park development. The, the actual work required by staff for this eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars is probably the general manager signing the agreement and the applicant paying the money into her bank account. That's about the extent of it.
Councillor Moores?
Thank you. This is into planning. So you're saying that the developer has kicked in a million dollars for this development to be passed?
Director?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that's correct. They, they have been convinced that as a good corporate citizen, they should be paying a contribution towards the good of the community for their impact, I guess, in the community, although generally it's probably seen as positive, most of their impact. And they have agreed to pay the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars effectively for the community to use on a nominated project in the a nominated project in this case, uh, the Netball Court redevelopment.
So this is not to put blinkers on our eyes and we just grab the million dollars and run?
No, uh, so just to, to clarify probably for councillor Moores, if this was a private developer, the private developer would be required to make developer contributions within their legislative requirements and, and council's plans. Um, so it's a mandatory thing for private ones. For public developers and the, the state government doing it, they're not required to meet those obligations. Um, however, councils suggested that it would be kind of them to do that. Um, it given, uh, as the impacts of, of what the development will, will do. Um, it's, they should contribute just like any private sector one, um, and it probably refers back to unfortunately, they didn't do it around the, um, when they did the jail entrance. That wasn't part of their things. They didn't, they're not required to. And we didn't get any money out of them for, for that. So I think it's pleasing to see that they are happy to, to contribute.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Grine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Savell. I, I just want a little bit of clarification, um, from councillor Dunn. I think what his question was around was delivering the actual Currie, Currie netball courts and what sort of timeframe and our ability to complete this project would be. Am I correct in saying that councillor Dunn to, to a director?
The acting director of works.
Thanks councillor Grine. Uh, through you, uh, Mister Mayor, I believe, uh, whether it was last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, we had a presentation on Booth Netball, uh, facility, um, where it was identified, uh, we had an issue in relation to the total amount of funds. Um, so the planning and delivery process is well progressed on this. So this additional funding will go to helping cover that shortfall. Um, so in terms, uh, I suppose following on from what the director of planning said, um, it's an existing project that we've already started. So, um, unlike potentially other, uh, planning agreements that we may have, um, this one is quite light on in terms of the additional resourcing or time associated or milestones, um, to, to, I suppose, close it out.
Thank you.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, I just, uh, question on the greenhouse gas emissions and et cetera from this place. Because I know that there was the Labour Party when it was originally spoke about, said they didn't want it because they want zero emissions. What sort of emissions are we gonna get out of this gas-fired power station? Because I know that gas is on the hit list of getting stopped, yes.
Unless the director wants to take that, I, I would imagine that's a, a question for the federal government.
Federal government? Well, we're approving it.
They're funding it.
We're approving it. We're approving it and taking a million dollars off them. Shouldn't we know that? We, didn't we have, didn't we have a?
Councillor Olsen, this is, uh, a planning agreement. This is an approval of the, the site. So this is not about the approvals, so, or, or things that, that go with actually developing the site. This is about a planning agreement subsequent to that approval. So.
So we don't care what emissions comes in.
Can, councillor Olsen, are, are you, you questioning or is that a, a question or are you, you're wanting to debate?
I'm entitled to have a say, aren't I?
I, I just thought you'd finish questioning, so.
I'm entitled to ask another question if I want to as well. But what I'm trying to say is we introduced a policy here, we have zero emissions, we're gonna have electric cars yet you buy a diesel car. We have a policy here that we're gonna have zero emissions, yet we're sitting here saying it's great, we're gonna get a million dollars out of a, a place that's gonna have emissions, it's gonna come out, it's gonna affect the environment. So what are we? We, we got double standards here? I, I, I just don't understand what we're doing here. If you either support, either support gas-fired power stations, you either support coal-fired power stations or you support the money. There's something going, you need to make up your mind what you want. Just don't have, make up, make up a policy and just say, put the policy out on the shelf and we'll take the money. We're not, we're, we're, we're double dipping here. And I think you can say we're all environmentalists. We all wanna make sure we got that, no greenhouse gases, but we'll take the money. Thank you very much.
Councillor Hill in, uh, debating reply.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Just in closing, I guess, and perhaps in, in response to councillor Olsen's statement, I guess, sorry, because I can't answer the question. You point to the director. I, I think in my understanding, and I think from what has been mentioned to us here in the, around the chamber, is this is a state government uh, approval on a federal government project that we may have got nothing from if not for this money coming through, as, uh, Mayor Savell mentioned, in relation to the jail entrance. And I think if, if the two options are, we get nothing and it's built, or we get this money and it's built, I think we, we still are capable of taking this, uh, getting this money from them to go back towards our community and still, you know, making our case that we want to support a, our climate change and resilience plan that we adopted at council.
Thank you. With no, uh, further debate, uh, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillor, there's Moore, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against councillor Olsen and councillor Jurd, declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report C C fifty-three, uh, twenty twenty-three, the election of the deputy mayor. Uh, someone moving the recommendation in front of us moved councillor Burke, seconded councillor Painter. Um, so all those in, no debate, all those in favour. Sorry, this is for the this is for the process. Yep. Um, so it's unanimous? Yep. Uh, unanimous. So I will now, uh, hand the floor over to the general manager as the returning officer to undertake the, the, uh, process around the election of deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd like to advise the council meeting that two nominations have been received, those being councillor Watten and councillor Hawkins. Voting will be conducted between councillors Watten and Haw- Hawkins by a show of hands. We will start the process with a show of hands. Those in favour for councillor Watten? Thank you. Uh, now we move on to a show of hands for those fa- in favour of councillor Hawkins. Thank you. As general manager, I advise that councillor Hawkins was a success- successful candidate and elected the position of deputy mayor from twenty-one of September twenty twenty-three until the September twenty twenty-four council elections.
I thank the general manager for, for that and, uh, and congratulate councillor Hawkins on his election. Um, I'd also like to, uh, thank councillor Moores, uh, who has served in, in deputy mayor, uh, for approximately eighteen months, uh, and thank him for his support and commitment during that time. Uh, we'll now move on to, uh, report, uh, C C fifty-four, twenty twenty-three. Uh, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking on that, uh, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just got a couple of quick questions firstly. So the library is a community space, right? And what is, what is displayed there that this report is concerned of to warrant us to revoke the community notice board?
Director.
Thank you. Um, councillor, um, Jurd, we're not proposing to remove the community notice board. What we are proposing to council is that the policy that we currently have in place, which is more, um, more likely a procedure, um, is revoked. Um, the community notice board will still, um, be retained in the libraries. But we also are asking councils, council laws to make the resolution that we do not host petitions at the library unless the elected council has resolved to have those petitions um, displayed at the library. So the actual community notice board and the like will still remain.
Oh, okay. That is, uh, that's not what I read in the report, that's all. That's so confusing to me. Um, oh, okay. So, oh. All right, well, I just, I don't know about this one. To be honest with you saying that, that's totally different to how I read the report. Because to me, it looked like that you were trying to r- remove the community, um, notice board. That's where we put a lot of our D A, um, notifications up on the community notice board. I mean, we've already removed how we, how many we put through the, um, newspaper. So I just thought this was another opportunity to take notice, notification for de- developments of people. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, this was another item, and I think perhaps I was a little bit similar to councillor Jurd originally, just in, in sort of trying to get my head around what the, um, what the change in the policy would encompass. And so, and the discussions that I've had with other councillors and the, and the staff, it sort of brought me around to the position of at the moment, council will sort of host a petition in the library if anyone's taken it forward. And, and, and that can, I think, perhaps be taken in point that council then supports that. You know, if we're actively hosting it on public exit, public display in a library, you know, if you walk in there and you see that, you might think, oh, these are the petitions that council's currently supporting and wants people to, you know, sign and get a hold of. And I think with this change in place, that sort of puts it, brings it back in line that once we as a council elect that we want a petition put up on display, that go- it goes up and people can go and sign it and it's something that we support. However, it sort of will remove that sort of position of any single petition can be put up in the library and anyone can sign it, no matter whether or not it's come to us for a sort of endorsement or not.
Councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. I just can't get my head around this because, okay, there's two sets of rules here. I mean, one, we're saying we can't have a petition there because it's against council and all that, yet we can have the yes and no vote at the library. So what, what is the difference? Could someone explain that to me?
Uh, councillor Moores, the, uh, the decision to put information regarding the referendum was a decision of council, which would be directly in line. The decision was a decision of council and, uh, council voted that way to, to do that. So it's, uh, um, a, would be in line with the keeping of this policy.
Amazing.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, so hosting of, of petitions, um, would refer that council endorses petitions. Uh, rather than taking this, um, revoking this, um, amendment, why don't we just have a sign saying that council, um, does not endorse any petitions, that petitions that are on display uh, for the public use only and doesn't reflect the, the position, the position of council? A disclaimer.
Director.
Um, thank you, Mayor Savell. Perhaps a little bit of, um, background and history for, um, those councillors that are newly elected. The original policy came in because there was no policy around what was and wasn't displayed in our libraries in particular, particularly around petitions. Um, that led to instances where there was potential for conflict. Because unless you have a policy that says you can or you can't, um, you can't restrict what petitions go in to what is essentially a, a, a public building. So that was the original idea around the, the policy when it came into into being a number of years ago. So we basically set out that we would not accept a petition in our libraries unless the elected council had resolved to, um, to accept that petition and have it go be, be, um, available for public exhibition. The idea behind it was to get rid of that angst where we had staff making the decision and going, yes, I'll let your petition in, but I'm not gonna let your petition in. Um, I don't agree with that one, so we're not putting that up. Um, the policy as it was written, was written more as a procedural document. Um, as part of our normal review with all our policies, we review them on a regular basis. If it's a policy, it's a policy of the elected council. Um, when we went through this, it was basically determined the majority of the document was a procedural type document that guided our staff on how we dealt with these issues. We can have that as procedure. The reason we have recommended council keeps that bit on the books as a resolution of council about unless the council has resolved to publicly support a petition, we will not have the petitions in our libraries, is to take that angst away and have that whole, um, remove that com- potential for conflict where I have an officer going, yes, I'll accept yours, but I won't accept yours.
Thank you. Uh, did you have a question, councillor Jurd? Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, this, this is just the recommendation. This is why I got confused and I wanna just ask it again. That council revoke the display of community notices, community displays and expeditions and hosting of petitions. So is that only petitions?
So I, I think that's the name of the, that's the name of the policy we are evoking. So we're evoking the policy, we're not actually removing the notice board.
Okay. I just wanna give you a little heads up. With me being dyslexic, that is written extremely confusing. And I see it straight away as only community notices. And I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that some people out there in the community have, have dys- dyslexia like me and would read that as their community notices are gonna be taken away.
Yeah, and it, it is an extremely long title of a policy.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Um, and I just point out that I, I'm not sure on page twenty-five of the agenda, this meeting refers to the minutes of the last meeting as, uh, councillors, uh, Painter and Watten may take offence as they voted also to, uh, to display referendum material at the, uh, library. Uh, no further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olsen and Savell. Those against councillor Moores and Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report, uh, C C fifty-six, twenty twenty-three. Uh, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, this one, I think, is, is a reasonably, uh, straightforward, um, report back to us with a resolution. This is this change will just en- enable us to reclassify this land as operational land, which is, is going to allow us to do, you know, what we would like to do with it moving forward. You know, the difference between a piece of community land, being something like a park that you can, you know, that is used specifically and has a plan for how that park is used, or a bit of operational land, which might be an empty block that we may wanna use for a different purpose. That's bringing these, these blocks here into line with being a, a piece of operational land, which also, um, aligns in with our Cessnock CBD master plan, you know, which has some, some goals of achieving different, um, access into the middle of the CBD through this location here. And so I, I think it's good to see this sort of moving along, you know. One of the, one of the comments we hear in here quite often is about how stuff like that CBD master plan takes a very long time to get moving and for any progress to be made. Um, and I guess what we're seeing here is, is one small piece of that progress sort of moving along.
Thank you, councillor Jurd.
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I'm just wondering, have we, have, we have pu- sort of purchased this land for to look into doing the CBD plan, is that right? It's about that, isn't it? No, it's, it's beautification, isn't it? Beautification.
Um, thank you. Yes, it came out of the CBD master plan, um, strategy was adopted a number of years ago. Um, and leveraged off that and certainly opportunities that are presented through Hunter Water.
Okay.
For potential beautification of the, the Hunter Water Channel.
Right, yeah. Thank you. Where would, um, the residents find this CBD plan so they can have a good look at it? Because I've had a few people ask me about it. I know it would be great if they had a good look because they can then be part of the discussion.
Director.
Um, thank you. The master plan should still be on our website. Um, however, I don't know where. Um, I don't, um, access it quite often, but certainly would be there if, if the residents typed in Google, um, Cessnock City Council CBD Master Plan.
Okay.
It would take them straight to the document.
Thank you, because I was just about to ask what they'd type in.
Yeah, uh, the report refers to on page sixty-nine, um, in the background section there, the wording is, calls it Cessnock Commercial Precinct Master Plan and Public Domain Plan. So I would start with that on the council site of those words. Uh, councillor Olsen.
Yeah, yes, uh, Mayor, this is part of our CBD master plan that started at forty-six million and is now over seventy million and all I've seen done was build a dot that failed. Um, and here we are buying land that's gonna be beautified with money we haven't got. Um, and we all know what financial position we're in at the moment. Um, so I, look, I, I think, I think we have to be realistic here. We've just gone and bought land that no one else would have bought. And we're gonna reclassify it and make it a little park um, in the middle of town for I, I look, I, I'm, I'm lost for words. I just feel that our, our CBD master plan will be, is so far out of date now. It's so far out of budget. It's never gonna happen. It might, you might have a plan there, but I, all I, I'm just frustrated that we're gonna be spending money on this part which is not gonna benefit the majority of the community by travelling around on roads that are falling apart. And this is only gonna put us in a worse financial position if we move down this track. of buying land to make another park. Uh, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's, I, I, I think we need to be looking at what is the most essential thing for this community at this point in time. And it's certainly not that section there. The businesses there would, well, one major shopping shop there that's never, hasn't been open in years, um, was actually supposed to be bought by council so we could put a road through there, but there's been no progress on that. There's been no progress on Keane Street. There's been no progress on anything. But the dot and the dots, we're still waiting on a hundred thousand dollar report on how we're going to fix the dot. I just, I just felt that we just seem to be ad hoc about what we do, when we do it and why we do it. And this might be part of a major plan, but the major plan is so far out of date and so far out of budget and so far out of reach for this council to complete. It should be just, uh, I think we should be revoking that plan and starting again.
Thank you. Um, I'll just clarify for councillors and councillor Olsen. Um, this isn't regarding the purchase of any of those sites. Council currently already owns those four sites. Where council has already bought and owned through previous resolutions. This report is just dealing with the classification of those items. So councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I know this is for the master plan of the CBD, um, but, uh, isn't the Hunter Water Board paying for this or, or is it council? Or is it coming through a grant of some sort? Because we own the land and all we're going to do is just, just fence it off and, and... So what are we, what are we, who's paying for it? I mean, this was brought through the, a committee meeting. Uh, councillor Olsen's on that, but obviously he mustn't have been there to know what was going on.
Yeah, uh, this, just to clarify councillor Moors, this, this report up here is a not, like, no monetary cost report. This is just a classification process. We either have to classify any land that council owns.
But we're classifying it just to...
Have to be classified as operational or classified as community land. Uh, and so this is to classify it as operational land on our, um, on our register.
Or further down the track, it would be better classed as operational, correct director?
Director.
Um, thank you. Um, having land classified as operational, um, is certainly from a, um, operational perspective and ease of function and ability of council to do stuff with it is certainly way better than having community land.
Correct.
Which has a lot of restrictions around it.
Thank you.
Um, you close. Uh, councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, just, just a couple of points of clarification. Um, this went out onto exhibition and there were several, um, submissions that came back to council on what the community believes should be done with this land. But having looked at all of those submissions, they were all revolving around, um, whatever the community wants done with this land, it all revolves around the fact that it needs to be moved to operational. So basically, this, this motion is, is to move it to, to operational, which I fully support. But given that it originally came to strategic property with regard to it being reclassified so we could do something along that drainage strip, I'm quite sure, I remember, it came back to us simply because we had confirmation with Hunter Water that they wanted to do something from their end around the beautification of that strip. So therefore we started to move to, to start the process to get it moved to operational so we can actually enact what Hunter Water were wanting to do. So can I just get some clarification around that process, please?
Director.
Uh, thank you. Yes, councillor Dunn, you are correct. The, the land, um, needed to be in council ownership for us to be able to have any chance of accessing that Hunter Water, um, grant that was available in relation to the beautification of the channel.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'm, uh, like councillor Dunn, I'm, uh, supportive of the, uh, reclassification for operational land because, um, having a plan, um, is good, though we need to make sure that we're ticking it off along the way. And I, I take, um, some councillors' points, uh, within the chamber that, um, there are issues with Cooper Street. Um, however, what the overall arching plan is trying to do is to bring people into the CBD and, um, beautification of a CBD is really important. And you look at the work that council and other organisations have done with the laneways. Um, and I do, I agree, you know, there's a, a report coming back on the, um, Cooper Street, um, white dot. Um, however, uh, the Stomp Festival wouldn't be as successful as it was if there wasn't work done within the CBD. Um, you've got the Posty Bike GP where there's beautification done. And these events are bringing thousands, tens of thousands of people, uh, to our local area. Um, the vision of council is to expand Cooper Street, uh, so we can have a green space, so we can have markets, we can have buskers, we can have an inviting area. Um, and having forward thinking is a good thing for this council, um, having plans in place. And having this reclassification helps us do that. It helps us get to the end goal and whether that is two years, five years, twenty years. Unfortunately, in the past, there hasn't necessarily been concrete plans that council can work to. So the decisions that we make now aren't gen- necessarily about the now, but they're about the long-term future. They're about future generations, generations being able to create a space that is beneficial for our local community, not just for locals but for visitors. Um, and classification of this land is so important, uh, to be able to support that going into the future.
Uh, councillor Hill, closing.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Just a very quick point, just to, um, for councillor Jerd in the end there. While, while the debate was going on, I, I did try to jump on and have a little look around. And I, I will agree, it's a, it's a little bit deep, a couple of clicks deep for me. Um, but it's only because I've gone looking for these before. Um, if you're looking to go for the reference, maybe the directors will pass along for you. It's under, um, Plan and Build on the homepage and then Planning. And then there's some local planning frameworks which show a lot of those kind of things. And that's where you can get a hold of that CBD master plan. And so I've, I've usually, I've usually, I've gone on there a few times before and sort of downloaded my own little copies of it because it's easier for me to go to my own copy than on the website.
Thank you. No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillors, uh, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Jerd and Savell. Those against councillor Olsen. I'll declare it carried. Uh, report CC fifty seven, twenty twenty three. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded. Uh, councillor Burke. Uh, no debates. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, CC fifty eight, minutes of the Strategic Property Committee. Moving that way councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Painter. Uh, no debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report CC sixty, twenty twenty three, uh, financial statements. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, just to start us off, I would like to also add an additional dot point, if I could, to the bottom of this resolution. Um, and then I'm happy to speak to that as well as the rest of the, um, resolution. The dot point five being that council requests the general manager, um, source additional advice on council's responsibilities and potential liabilities for past waste sites throughout the local government area.
Uh, and that's accepted by councillor Sanders, the, the second up. Um, so now speaking on that motion councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, first, I guess in reference to that additional dot point there, I, um, the liability that, that council has had to account for in these statements in regards to the, um, remediate, you know, possible future remediation of these orphan waste sites, I think, is, is having an extreme impact on, on the way that our financial statement is, is reported like that. These are, these are sites that have been, you know, you know, dumps that have been used in the past that are now sitting there, um, as old dormant dump sites. Um, and, you know, our, our council currently puts forward a, a major amount of money down to the state government in our waste levy, you know, which in, in my understanding is a perfect sort of use of this sort of money. Um, however, the current, the current amount of money that comes back to us from that waste levy is quite, is quite minimal. So I think that it's worthwhile council investigating, um, our current legal, our current responsibility or liabilities for these sites and whether or not it's something that we are required to continue accounting for in this way in future statements. Because, you know, this, this item, um, of these waste sites alone is adding close to ten million dollars there in, in the statements that perhaps should not need to be there. Um, additionally, the, we're seeing and we're having a bit of a sort of bad luck, good luck sort of situation here with the amount of, uh, capital works we're undertaking. You know, we're seeing an increase, um, from last year's operational plan on capital works from twenty nine point two million to this year being fifty six point seven, point seven million. However, we're running into this issue when we're replacing parts of our infrastructure that have not, um, reached their expected end of life. Um, due to the fact that we've had grants come up that allow us to do it, you know, not having to use our own money for it, um, means that we're, we're losing large amounts in depreciation on these items that, that are being replaced. And I, it's disappointing that, you know, we get to do this work and, and a town like, say, for example, Weston gets a brand new bridge, which is fantastic to replace the one that was, uh, that was knackered. But we have to then also write down a depreciation loss on an asset that we couldn't have ever possibly sold to anyone. It's something that we have to look after. But that is just a, you know, an enigma of the accounting standards that we have to adhere to as a council. You know, as someone who manages a budget in a workplace, um, for my profession and for my household budget, you're used to income and expenditure and that's it. And then you come to a situation like this in local government with reporting and it's, it's just a whole other layer of complexity. Um, and so while I think it's, you know, on paper, as we can see, we're, we're running these additional costs. I, um, I think it's not as, it's not as, I guess you shouldn't be, it's not as dire as perhaps if you go into it with the mindset of what you're used to on your household budget and you see this, this, this marker of a major deficit. You need to sort of take these things into account. And I'd like to see, um, the possibility of us as council looking at ways that we can even reduce that current, um, the way that I assume to report it, just because it makes us, makes it more difficult to sell these sort of benefits that we have to the community that come with these sort of accounting, um, issues.
councillor Jerd.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Savell. Council can choose not to refer the statements to audit, but this will lead to council not being able to meet legislated timelines to complete financial statement pro- process. Well, that just says it all. I don't have a choice. This report must pass. The opinion from staff is that it could be from two thousand and two where council did not recognise cost of two of the formal waste sites due to questions about access or uncertainty on rehabilitation. Or it could be the court case council lost over the hangout out at the airport, which is still in progress at the moment and we don't know how much that will be. Seriously, is this acceptable? I mean, not long ago, five hundred thousand dollar mistake was found. Now this is twenty five point six eight million. Million. Is this council wanting to go broke? Are we wanting to go into administration? I know as a resident to go into administration seems like it would be the better option at this moment, but it's actually not. That means the rate payer will have less, even less of a say. This, I'm afraid, is unacceptable. And again, I sit here horrified. My name will be attached to this the year Cessnock council folded. I just want to know where you're planning to get the money for the notice of motions that are on debate for tonight. Where you're planning to get the money for the five point two million dollars for the Currie Nippon Court? Where are we going to get the money to complete the Wallonby Road disaster? Will it forever be four lanes only to the Pickle Pig? Seems like Labour has something going from across all levels of government. Massive debt everywhere, half finished jobs and poorly designed projects. Thank you.
councillor Olsen.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Look, I just listened to councillor Hill just say about assets and depreciation. The more assets you have, the more depreciation you're going to have, obviously. And every road we class as an asset is depreciating every minute because unless we maintain it. And if we're going to have depreciation on it, if we don't have depreciation on what we, what we own, then how can we honestly do our financial planning and understand that we need to be putting money back into these roads and bridges and to our infrastructure and everything we have? So every time we buy a new asset, every time we build a new park, we have to maintain it and keep it at a certain level of control. I've went through this and I've had a look at this budget and twenty five million, six hundred and eighty three thousand is a lot of debt. Now, I looked at the performance ratios and the ratio measures council's achievement of containing operational expenditures within operating revenue. We're at minus fourteen point four one percent. Now, that's extremely poor, extremely poor. We then move on to the purpose of our own source operating revenue. And we've gone, we've come down over the last three years. We're down to fifty one point two seven percent, where the benchmark is sixty percent and we're heading down. We look at the purpose of our unrestricted current rate, uh, current asset ratio and we're going down again. We're at two point nine eight. We're getting down to where, where it's getting to a point where we're not going to be able to sustain it. We're getting on to them, we're looking at purpose of debt service cover ratio, covering how much we can borrow. Once you get down to two percent, they're saying you're going backwards, you're going out the back door. This ratio measures availability of operating cash to service debt, including interest, principles and lease payments. We're at two point one four percent. Two point one four and it's two, two points is when we can't operate again. We're going to go out the door. We have to really look at what we're doing. There's other, other comments in here. We've got, yes, we've got, uh, cash that can keep us going for ten months. That's good. That's good. Better than a lot of us. But also we've got to remember that our rates aren't meeting our, what we, what we're up to, who's trying to, trying to keep our, us, our heads above water. There's other issues we've got coming up. The Nippon Courts, which councillor Jerd mentioned. We just heard tonight we get eight hundred and eighty eight thousand for, to reduce the cost of the five point two million dollar blowout there. So that's down to four point three we need for that. The Bridges Health Path, it's over budget and we don't know when that's going to be fixed. There's going to be more money there. The Head and Greta motion for extra road works not. Where are we going to find the funds for that? You know, who's, what are we going to defer to be able to fund Head and Greta rates? I, I understand Head and Greta needs a road done, but if you're in Ward D, are you going to say, I'll give up Deacon Street funding to do Head and Greta? Or are you going to say, I'll take it off Ward A? Which ward are you going to take it off? If you put these motions up, you should be putting up where you're taking the funds from and whose, who road's not going to be done. Our airport court case is going to, could bite us in the butt with another couple of million dollars. We have, we have many other mistakes. Have we got any other mistakes in our accounting practices? We've been finding mistakes over the last couple of years. It's been, it's been, we're going backwards every time we find a mistake. We've got Wallonby Road coming up and we need, if we move forward with completing four lanes on Wallonby Road, we need seventeen million dollars. That's if the guesstimation is right, it's thirty four million dollars to do that road. If the guesstimation is wrong, like everything else we guesstimate, we'll be up for thirty million, not seventeen. And we have to wait for developed contributions to come in to pay for that. So we have to borrow more money. We have to borrow more money and we're at two point one four now. We can't afford to borrow that sort of money. We're in trouble for that. How do we turn this trend around? I know that before the election, our, our current mayor was a councillor at the time and he moved the motion to sell the last, the last lot of land we had in Vineyard Grave, which could have made us eighteen million dollars. But he sold it for four because on the books it showed a million and it gives us a balanced budget. That was poor leadership then. And what we're seeing here is poor leadership again as our budgets keep going backwards and backwards and backwards. Every asset you've got will be depreciated. You buy a new car, the price is going down. The mayor's car is not worth what it was when you bought it. Everything goes down. The roads, they can't be classed as an asset when we, all they are is ever a liability. We have to fix them. They are falling apart. There's no curb and guttering, the drainage issues we've got around this town. Yet we're going to look at another park to beautify the shopping centre. I tell you, we've got to start listening to the people. What do the people want? Not what we want, it's what these people out here want.
councillor Olsen, time's expired. Uh, councillor Burke.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just have a, a few questions if, if that's okay, just from, uh, following on from councillor Olsen's debate. Uh, because it's got me wondering whether I've read this report wrong. Um, is the twenty five million dollars a debt?
To the, to the chief financial officer.
Uh, no, the twenty five million dollars is not a debt. The twenty five million dollars is a deficit. They're two different things. Uh, debt is a li- an ongoing liability to council. Uh, the only debt that council took on in the last financial year was four point four million dollars.
Thank you. And can the director or manager elaborate on our cash bottom line? As in, how worse off is this council from the previous financial year to this financial year?
The chief financial officer.
Uh, over the last uh financial year, we have only used eight hundred thousand in cash.
Thank you. And just picking up on another point that councillor Olsen mentioned about council needing seventeen million dollars to come in and we have to wait for developer contributions, a question to the director of planning environment. Do we have any of that developer contributions already?
Director.
Three, Mayor, specifically for Wallonby Road.
Oh, sorry, Wallonby Road.
Yeah, for Wallonby, yes, we do. I couldn't I couldn't tell you the figure, though.
Thank you. So we do have some developer contributions and I appreciate um our chief financial officer for briefing council um last week in regards to this report because um it was concerning for me, and I know that the staff have taken extra time to talk to councillors even yesterday about this, um because I was concerned. But when you actually sit down and have an understanding of how it's put together, um then you are able to make an informed decision. And looking on paper, uh to the normal person like I am every day, Joe Boy, I don't have too much about um the financial requirements for this council in regards to auditing and and ticking the boxes that we have to. However, we have auditors for a reason and we have picked up some errors and it's it's come to council. It's, you know, it's it's not about, you know, we've we've made a mistake. Uh, it's about um having those independent auditors and the review panels to make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's. And I hundred percent agree with uh councillor Hill adding that dot point in regards to past waste sites. That's a huge liability to be thrown at this council. It's over ten million dollars. So if you take that out, you know, the twenty five million um goes down quite quickly. And I stress to the community um that while there is a deficit, and if you don't know the difference between the deficit and a debt, Google it, because it's very interesting to have that appreciation of what the two differences are. This council will always continue to work hard at our financial position. Um, this hasn't been something that has been a decision lightly. It's it's been forced upon us to um add in eleven point seven six million dollars uh for a current waste site uh and the six orphan waste sites. This isn't just something that we've woken up and decided to do, um because it is affecting our bottom line. Council spent eight hundred thousand dollars out of its bank account in the last twelve months. For me, we've been able to do so many uh capital works without making this council go backwards with cash in our bank. And councillor Olsen's spot on. We can last ten months without a single cent coming into this council, but that's not going to happen. Just because we have a deficit doesn't mean that this council is going backwards. Uh, and I encourage any community member that has a concern with the finances to speak to any of us councils about it, because I'm more than happy to sit down and give the explanation that our chief financial officer gave to us, and I'm sure it will help you understand the financial position of this council.
Councillor Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a question probably to um the director or the chief financial officer. The um the orphan sites that we do have, um does council own that property or is that a crown land facility?
Director.
Um, I think I believe two of the the parcels, the ones that have been brought in this year, um aren't council owned land, aren't.
Councillor Painter.
Just for the benefit of the community, um I'm actually on the audit risk committee. Um, and it's difficult. I've been in business my whole life and it's difficult to read these statements. So um from the community point of view, it'd be hard to get your head around. So I want to try and explain it as best I can so the average punter in the street can understand it. Um, the debt for the orphan sites is a book debt. It's not a not a debt that we're actually servicing. It's a debt that if it's found that we are liable, that we need to somehow find that money, whether through state grants or through um dump levers coming back to the council, some somewhere in the future, which might never be realised, um we'll have to um possibly account for that. That's why it's on the books. It's not actually carrying a debt. So um and I had a meeting this afternoon with um our chief financial officer and um and to explain our financial position from seventy two million dollars, eight hundred thousand, say seventy two million dollars in the bank. We had last year, we spent a lot of money on projects over thirty million dollars. And so from a business point of view, if I'd spent, say, thirty million dollars on trucks and had only an eight hundred dollar downturn in my accounting, I'd be stoked. All right. So it's kind of like like that. So just to explain it that way. Now, the public needs to understand that councils and governments should pretty much always never make money. We are a service, um not not for profit um entity. We provide services to the community. Everything that council does is, um we, the classes of assets, we apparently have one point four billion on our books. Try and advertise Cessnock Council for self one point four billion. You wouldn't get anywhere near that. But that's the the debt that we carry or the assets that we carry. I would like to suggest that those assets are actually liabilities because they only maintaining and replacing. And so they're not actually assets. We are a service entity providing for the community. So just to try and hopefully help some of the community members that um the financial position that we're in, which I am responsible for, I've been on the um audit risk committee, I sign off on that every couple of months, we have a meeting. There is no chance I would put my name to a report that could end up with, say, a position that we had on a central coast council where there was five hundred million dollars in debt. If I thought that we're heading down that path, I would not put my name to that report. I am concerned about debt one hundred percent and um debt is never a good option. Uh, we borrowed four point four million dollars this year. I would suggest that we live with our with our means in upcoming budgets and not to proceed down the road of debt. If the Cuddy Sark Airport hangar dispute rules in our favour, which is in the third phase of that, we won the first case, lost the second case, and the third case is at the High Court. If that comes back in our favour, about six million dollars will come back into council, um which puts us in a positive um position for this year. Um, if that rules now in our favour, if not, it's been accounted for. All right. So we have to look at the worst case scenario. Um, I think that's about all I have to say on it. It's um I hope that helps some of the community members that were not carrying a twenty five point six million dollar debt. Um, it's not as bad as it looks. And I know that's not going to give me any friends on my left, which are my colleagues, um but that's the truth of the matter, how how it sits.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Painter. Councillor Groan.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I just I just want clarification. Councillor Judd, you mentioned five hundred thousand dollars was um was found as as wrongdoing. I just want clarification on that. What is that money a saving to council or was it a line item adjustment that it was placed in the wrong year? I just want clarification that we didn't actually find a mistake there, that it was actually put in the wrong year. That money will still be allocated to be spent. Is that correct?
The chief financial officer, from memory, I think it was relating to.
Yeah, it's relating to election expenses.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, unfortunately, well, all fortunately, depending how you feel about democracy, is still going to be spent. Um, uh, five hundred thousand, but the initial budget item was incorrectly put into the wrong budget year, but not a saving, just a timing difference.
Uh, thank you. I I just also wanted to mention how much of our operating budget is reliant on uh on on rate payers opposed to state and federal grant funding?
Chief Financial Officer.
Uh, thank you, councillor. So our rate base in the financial statements uh before you, uh, the rates are around forty two million and the uh with other user fees and charges, it's it's closer to sixty five million. So essentially the the domestic waste charge, so collection of rubbish, et cetera. Um, and our total budget for the year was a hundred and fifty four million. Uh, so our total income was a hundred and fifty four million. So essentially sixty five million, the other ninety is coming from all other types of sources, capital grants from governments as well as development contributions, dedicated assets from subdivisions and the like.
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, I've I'm seeing a report here, um, uh, report on infrastructure assets as of the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty three. Uh, and we mentioned this in that in that meeting yesterday, that the 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 consumer expectation is two hundred and fifty four million dollars. So am I right in saying that um the Cessnock LGA expectation is worth two hundred and fifty four million dollars in works for operation of this council? Am I correct in saying that?
Chief Financial Officer.
Um, not exactly, no. The the two hundred and fifty four million dollars in in that report relates to the amount of upgrade of assets required by council uh to meet the agreed community standard for those assets. To so to bring them to a condition that the uh that is the agreement between council and the community.
And sorry, could you just repeat how much?
Yep. So two, so it's two hundred and fifty four million dollars we uh obligated to spend at some point to bring our assets up to the standard required by the community. So that's not, that's not a safety level. That's a level that is agreed, that a certain road should be in a certain category, another road may be at another category. But at the moment, the calculation for that is two hundred and fifty four million. And to put that into perspective, our capital works last year was only fifty six million. So we, well, I wouldn't say that so much, councillor Olsen.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, no further debates. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, councillor Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against councillor Olsen, councillor Judd. I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to uh report WI thirty twenty twenty three, uh outdoor pool season review. Moving that way, councillor Sander, seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking councillor Sander.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, annually, we get a um report from our staff in regard to um the operations at our outdoor pools. Um, I'd like to thank firstly, thank the staff for this report. Uh, the review of council's outdoor pools for last season certainly gives the the community an insight into the community, the community asset, how often um how of how often these facilities are used and the opportunity council has to continually make them better. The splash pad at Cessnock Pool is just that. The increase in patronage of fifty percent last season is a testament. Councilors are aware that the cost to operate these outdoor pools has increased by three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars odd due to the need to pay wages for our kiosk, um purchases of the kiosk and general planned and reactive maintenance, which is expected when dealing with aging facilities. Council is also committed to ensuring the community have reasonable access and reasonable entry fees to the outdoor pools and the and the Currie Aquatic Centre. Living in a hot, dry environment such as Cessnock LGA, these facilities are valuable, a valuable asset asset over the summer months. Council's aquatic facilities are heavily subsidised by council rate payers, but we need, we also need to recognise the importance of ensuring the community has a place where they can cool down and also have the opportunity to learn to swim in a safe environment. What an important skill to have. Everybody should have it. It is always encouraging to see an increase in attendances annually and not especially since especially since the pandemic. That put a damper on everything in the past few seasons. Hopefully, this is showing season, which starts in October, the long weekend, which is not far away, will increase our patronage even further. Council also have also previously requested that council staff carry out a review of all council's aquatic facilities, including Currie Aquatic Centre, as the tender option is due to expire in June, twenty twenty four. The council needs to determine options for future operations in the all the aquatic facilities, including the future needs of our of the community and also looking at opportunities to have improvement in this area. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Judd.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on page one oh one of this report, councillors stated that to improve conditions of the assets, these are the project renewals for Cessnock, concrete around the splash pad, 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 plant room and splash pad. Um, when, why would there be need for more concrete? Is it because the splash pad concrete area is not big enough and causing issues with the grass around it? Is that where they're doing the concrete? Is it to extend out the splash pad?
The director.
Thanks councillor Judd. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe this work was done to just um address some issues in relation to water runoff. Um, so it was just some additional concrete. So the works have already been done. Money's already been spent.
No worries. I thought that might have been the case. Thank you. Um, what are we doing to the splash? Okay. So is that the only thing that we're doing to this to to the splash pad? Like, this report says that we've already done what we were supposed to?
Director.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks councillor Judd. Um, yeah, this report talks about what we have done. So yes, this was all that was done in relation to the splash pad uh last year.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Um, the reason I ask this is because I just would love council to look into the safety of the splash pad, as I've never seen a slide like the one we have. It's so dangerous. The slide is quite high off the ground and it's straight onto concrete. Could we not extend the slide so it's not that high or look into the end of the slide going into a little pool or something? I've been looking at a lot of places with these types of things and I honestly don't know how this one passed OHNS, as every pool I've looked into with a splash pad, et cetera, has a slide, doesn't have a slide like this one. Council has an opportunity right now when the when times are hard and a lot of people are dreading the power bill over summer to extend the pool hours. Currently, Cessnock and Bransom Pool hours are on a weekday, six till five thirty, with no um recreational swimming between six and nine, meaning lap swimming only. So no family can access pool for leisurely swim. Their hours are nine to five thirty. Weekend is seven to five thirty. Again, no recreational swimming till after nine, leaving the residents who are not lap simmers to not be able to attend the pool until it's already quite hot and in the hottest part of the day. The report states we have had a jump in attendance and I really think it's a missed opportunity of our council not to look into this. Imagine the extra people we would have if the pool was open to, let's say, seven o'clock. I mean, most people finish work at five o'clock and you wouldn't make it to the pool in time for a swim. Even a massive cafe would make total sense. Would would, who doesn't love ordering some hot food after a good swim? I think it's a win-win and looking forward to this idea taking off. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Painter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I took words right out of my mouth, yes. Um, we know that the pounds, the pool has run out of lots, but I would really love to see the hours extended slightly so that the residents of Sessnock can actually use the pool on a hot summer's day during the week. Um, five thirty, I think, is just a bit too short of um time. So I'd like to have um the hours extended to maybe like councillor Judd said, about seven. And also, it'd be coming out of cost. And also, um, the safety of the side, like councillor Judd said, this is the only slide I've ever seen. I've been to a lot of pools where the side doesn't ever come up into into water or the side finishes into into water to decelerate the um the kids. So um I think we spent one point five million dollars on the on the splash pad. Another ten or twenty thousand dollars would have um for the for the safety aspect would have gone along way. So no questions, just observations in a statement to look at trying to extend the hours and increase the safety of the slide on the splash 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 pad.
Councillor Olsen.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have to, what both our independent councillors have already said was basically what I was looking at was uh that splash pad is dangerous. Most of them I've seen, they run down into the onto the ground and then they'll have a safety barrier around them and a small pool of water. So when you come down, you don't fall off onto the concrete. So that needs to be reviewed. They also, I believe, there was a, it was a few years ago, prior to this council, I had a motion put up before council that the staff had the the ability to be able to keep the pools open later at night on hot days when it was over a certain degrees because I I like councillor Judd and councillor Painter have just said, they the there's it doesn't get dark till eight o'clock at night. It's scorching hot at five o'clock in the afternoon, five thirty, and we're kicking everybody out and closing the pool down, when it it'd be great to be able to say, let's go down there, have a swim, and we can sit around and maybe get something to eat if there's a cafe there or something, and just spend the night there and even come home at eight o'clock, even keep it open at eight o'clock at night. The expense of keeping that open would be a couple of staff that work there, a bit of overtime for them. They'd be happy with that, I'm sure. Um, a bit more money. Um, a bit more money in their pockets. But what we, what we do is we're showing the community that we care about them more than what we care about the, the cost of keeping those staff there. Keep it open for the people and then we'll get more people coming in, more money coming in as well. So it, it, it's a win-win for the community, a win-win for the council, and it's a good community exercise to be able to keep that pool open at night at, to a certain night, hours of night. So that if, like at seven o'clock, if there's no one there, lock up, let's go home. But at, it's five thirty and it's thirty five, six, thirty six degrees and people are in the pool, I don't want to get out of the pool. Well, I'll stay in the pool. And if you've got a pool at home, well, you're in the pool, wouldn't you? Or having a barbecue around the pool. But, you know, this is, this is madness. What we, we shut that down. Branks and Cessnock Pool gets shut down at five thirty in the afternoon when people are finishing work at five o'clock. So, you know, everyone works odd hours, different hours now, but a lot of people finish at five o'clock. Got time to get home, get the kids and get to the pool. Get, they give them the opportunity to have a swim. I think it's madness. It was, it was a motion I had to council years ago, I can't remember when, and it was accepted that the staff would assess it each night to see if they could keep the pool open if it was over a certain degree of temperature. And I just don't remember that. I think this, maybe we should bring back a notice motion pool and bring that back in for the next meeting and, uh, debate that issue about how we help the community better use our assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it might be worth councillor Olsen, it might be something the director can just take on notice, but if that, um, was a, a resolution of council, I'm sure it still stands as a resolution of council and, and should the, um, the, the timing and availability of staff allow, um, if the general manager has delegation, then there may not be need to, um, to bring anything back up. But it might be, something if I can request that the, the acting director advise councillors via memo if that, uh, policy is in place. Uh, councillor Grine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Savow. Um, I would just like to know, if the director could let me know, have we had any complaints or issues around the splash pad currently? Have there been a lot of fault, uh, accidents or injuries? Do we have that information?
The acting director.
Thanks for the question, uh, councillor Grine, uh, through you, Mr Mayor. To my knowledge, we haven't had a significant amount of complaints, um, in, you know, child-based activities. I think there always are going to be minor incidents, but certainly there wouldn't be anything of significance that would, uh, create the need for a, an independent safety audit or, or something of the like.
Thank you. And do we currently have the staff? I, I agree with, um, councillor Olsen and Jurd in regards to having extended hours, but do you foresee issues with staffing around the pools and at what sort of costs would we be looking at based on this report that's in front of us?
Acting director.
Uh, thanks for the question again, councillor Grine and through you, Mr Mayor. Um, I will have to take that one on notice and talk to our manager of open spaces who manages the pool to see uh, what, uh, projections she might have done for extended hours. Um, anecdotally, I do know that she has issues, um, rec- recruiting staff, given it's a seasonal activity.
Currently.
So, uh, I, I don't know in terms of how we're going for this year, but I, I can find out and, and let you know.
Thank you.
Um, councillor Jurd, you had a?
I just quickly, um, yes, just quickly, Mr Mayor. Um, just for, uh, councillor Grine, I actually have a video if you'd like to see, um, I can send it to you via email of a young, um, man that, well, young preteen that went down the slide quite forcefully and landed on his tailbone and nearly broke it. If you'd like to see it, I can send it to you. Ta.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that as a, a question. Yes. Uh, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, director, um, infrastructure, I'd just like to say, uh, I'm all for looking at pool hours, but also I'm more concerned of the manning and the safety because I don't want to see understaffed there where in a pool, takes two seconds for a child to die. So please look into it. And I don't want to see council skimping thinking we'll get it open, we'll keep it open, please the public if we're not going to make it safe. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and in reply, councillor Sander.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I have a question for the, um, director of, acting director of Works Infrastructure as well. Are we going to fence that splash pad?
The acting director.
Thanks for the question, councillor Sander, um, through you, Mr Mayor. At this stage, we have no plans to fence the splash pad.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I, I certainly, um, agree with councillor Olsen Jurd in regard to the, um, extended hours. I believe it is some, is a, basically a given that if it's a thirty six year, uh, degree day, that, um, council officers that are working in the pools make a conscious decision to keep them open for an extra extended time. Um, because we just, like I say, you just can't kick them out if it's five thirty or six o'clock in the evening, if it's a really stinking hot day, they usually stay open till probably seven or eight o'clock. Just on, on notice. Thank you very much. But, um, yeah, good to see our operation of our pools, um, increasing our numbers. We're certainly getting that and the splash pad is excellent. I just hope that, um, we don't have any incidents this season and good luck for the season to the, um, the staff and, uh, management.
Thank you. With no further debate, let's put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report WI thirty one twenty twenty three, uh, councillor Sander is moving the recommendation with some additional points. So do you wanna?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I've got a couple of extra dot points there in regard to, um, everybody's aware that the tender is up for, um, uh, grabs basically next.
So just before you debate it, so those are the, the points raised, seconded by councillor Grine. Um, so now.
Yeah, okay. So two points are that the council engage an independent consultant to provide a more detailed KPI performance review of the centre prior to the tenuring process, which will be prior to next June, and that the report come back to council with the outcomes of this review. Maybe with a second.
Yep. So, any debate on, on that one, councillor Moores?
Uh, the only thing I'm concerned about with these Belgravia's is that at the moment, uh, I just wonder if it was overseeing anybody at that pool at Curry because on Seek they've, uh, they've got a venue manager position required and a regional manager's job for the pool required. So who's, who's looking after the place? If all the, all the hierarchy jobs are all on the line, who's overseeing the people there? And who's, uh, and the performance of them?
So, uh, question, you have to, director.
Uh, thanks for the question, I think councillor Moores, um, through you, Mr Mayor. Um, as part of the tender process, Belgravia put forward a structure that was accepted. Um, I believe, uh, without knowledge that from time to time, people potentially move on from their employment. Um, as we do, as I'm in a position right now, uh, people act in a role, um, you know, I'm sure they run more than, than one centre. I'm sure they have access to staff to complete the requirements and I know our team are doing random spot checks and are consulting with those people. Um, and I also know internally, we have put on a new aquatics coordinator who is looking closely at, uh, the Belgravia, uh, operation at Curry as well as our own pool. So I'm quite comfortable it's been well managed.
Because every one of these positions on Seek is for Curry. Thank you.
Yeah, with no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Oh, so we, you're voting for it, councillor Moores? Yes, unanimous. Um, report WI thirty two twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Sander, uh, speaking councillor Olsen.
Yeah, uh, the item on the bottom there, there, um, the one for the Macca's at the end of the main street, the road design that we've come up with, we're losing car parking there. Has the, um, local hotel there been notified that the changes we're gonna make in front of their business?
Yeah. Acting director.
Uh, thanks for the question, councillor Olsen. Um, so as part of the local traffic committee process, it goes on exhibition, public exhibition, which everybody has access to. Um, I'm not aware that there's been a specific notification to the hotel. Um, but there's certainly been an opportunity for all members of the community to have their say.
Yeah, that, that's all right to say it's been put up there for submissions and that, but if you don't tell the person that's gonna happen to them, if they're not looking on council's website or wherever, um, they don't know. And there's, uh, a little coffee shop in there that people stop and get a coffee at. And by the look of this, we're changing it so there's no parking along either side. So we're losing three parkings on the McDonald's side and probably, I'd say, five or six on the other side. So it's only eight or nine spots, but, you know, it's, it's a hotel that is gonna, utilizes these parking spaces. Um, for, so we're taking parking away from an existing business so another business can move in. Uh, I think that's wrong if we haven't spoken to them. And I would, I would like us that this item be removed from tonight's meeting until we've spoken to the owners of the hotel on, uh, which is the Royal Oak Hotel. I think it's still at Royal Oak, the Royal Oak Hotel, until they've been notified, notified of what changes councillors, uh, and if they've got any concerns about it. I haven't spoken to them personally, so I don't know them, I don't frequent that hotel. Um, I just, I just think that it'd be a courtesy, if you're gonna take parking away from a business, you would go and talk to them before you, um, authorise a plan. So I would move a, a, an amendment to this, that this be uh, delayed for a month to see if the owners of the hotel have any concerns about losing the parking on their side of the road.
So the, the so the amendment is that the, um, the report, the recommendations as adopted are, um, are endorsed except for the last one.
Yeah.
To be deferred for further consultation.
Deferred for a month to see if they, had your owners have any concerns. If they have no concerns, fine.
Um. Um, cats. Councillor Hawkins.
The points in discussion that councillor Olsen i- is raising, um, these concerns were raised by, I think it was all voting members raised concerns. Um, this is a matter for, um, Transport for New South Wales, they're the approval authority. And at that committee, it was put to our staff, our development services staff that were there, that this was a concern and that we would like, um, consultation with the hotel in regards to relocating.
I might just tell you before we go on, I don't think we went to a secondary of the amendment was councillor Jurd. So, back.
Look, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't think deferring this report will achieve anything, um, in as much as it, it's for our not ta- it's a Transport for New South Wales, uh, a, approval authority. Um, it's for council's information and consideration as to the technical merits of the, the signs and lines and the, the layout, the proposed layout that they've, um, they've put forward for approval. It, it's not, it's not a matter of consulting or, or council making a decision. Um, the, this committee, again, we come back to the, the technical merits of what's in front of the committee for it to consider. Engineer perspective, um, and, and I certainly made it clear and then the other voting members of the committee made clear to council staff that we'd like from our end as much done as possible to, uh, expedite the relocation of the loading zone. Um, so yeah, I, I don't see deferral as relevant. Um, so yeah, I would, I would move the original, that is, as the, the recommendation from that committee.
Yeah, so we've got the amendment in front of us, so we'll continue the debate on the amendment now is, uh, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, infrastructure, I'd, uh, my concern about this as a, a business person myself is about has, has any concern been taken where the kegs are dropped off? Because I, I had a business across the road from there for about fourteen years and I used to watch the keg truck pull up there twice a week, exactly where the parking is and drop the kegs off and down the hatch. So how are they gonna get their beer? Is it gonna be a loading sign there or what's going there?
Yeah, sorry, question for the acting director.
Thanks councillor Moores, um, through you, Mr Mayor. Um, I'll, look, I'm gonna have to take the specific details on notice. I haven't seen that, uh, I mean, I've seen it, but I can't recall the specific detail in that, uh, report. Um, but I can confirm that uh, the traffic committee and our technical officers consider all, uh, issues relating to the business, to the property um, and general traffic as well. So, um, I'm sure it's been given some consideration, but I can uh, take on notice and get some specific detail for you.
Yeah, um, I, I feel I can't vote on this for it because as far as I'm concerned, I don't think there's enough, uh, there's just a few warts there, this, that's been covered up. Thank you.
Uh, next up, um, councillor Olsen, did you have a question? You've already.
Councillor Hawkins say that he, he doesn't want to consult with the business because it's got. You wanted council consultant, but it, it doesn't matter what they come back with anyway. Because, because it, it's just a transport, is that correct? Who's, who's, who makes these decisions for our, for our businesses? The Transport New South Wales. Is that what we're saying?
That was a, a question, does, do you know, is this a, is this a decision of Transport for New South Wales through?
Um, okay, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, so in relation to the local traffic committee process, um, there's voting members, um, there's councillors on that committee, uh, Transport for New South Wales, uh, there's a representative from New South Wales Police, um, who, and the local member are, are the voting members of that committee. So as it works, the council officers prepare the report, make a recommendation based on the standards, based on, um, the potentially DA conditions or whatever that, that come with, um, the proposal. Um, and then that proposal in a report form goes to the committee, it's, um, where it's discussed and the recommendations either um, endorsed to go to council, um, or, or not.
Councillor Jurd.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Through you, if I can, I just want to ask councillor Hawkins a question, well, actually two, to get a bit of clarification, seeing as you are there. Um, I don't know if it might have been half answered with what councillor Moores asked, but about, did he just ask a minute ago about the loading zone for the kegs? Is that right? Yeah. Did you see anything on the report on where they would actually pull up? If they can't pull up, um, on Snape Street with the, um, preschool being behind, behind the pub, I'm actually quite concerned about that being an option. Would it be pulling up in the main street? Like, because I know when we tried to do parking um, adjustment in Vincent Sh- Vincent Street and Cessnock Street, there was an issue about the loading zone for the, um, pub there because of the keg situation. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they couldn't be moved, remember, because of the fact that the loading zone needed to be closed for the kegs. So is, that's pretty much what I, I'm sure that's what they sort of said. But anyway, that was one question and we kind of got that. Um, the next was, um, have, did, in that traffic committee, was it, was it recommended for the staff to inform the Royal Oak? Is that what you said about it? Yeah, yeah. So it was recommended for staff to let Steph, staff let, let, um, the Royal Oak know? Not really?
Sorry, I need to you. Councillor Olsen, councillor Hawkins.
It wasn't a specific directive to the staff because the committee doesn't have the power to direct staff. However, options for relocation were considered that would obviously be consulted with the, the hotel and any other businesses that were using the loading zone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but just anecdotally, John, while we're giving anecdotally, when a hotel loses its loading zone, it's not the end of the world for the hotel. I can speak from experience because it happened to the Chelmsford Hotel at Curry. Um, when we put in a roundabout on that main intersection, the hotel lost its loading zone. The, the, the keg delivery had to park in the car park of the hotel and the, the kegs were trolled in. So just to allow you, the pub doesn't close just because it doesn't have a loading zone.
Yeah.
Um, but no, thi- this, there were other options, looked at possibilities, but they would have to be worked through with the business as to what it specifically wanted and, and required.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but as far as. Um, but as far as giving a directive to staff to do that, the committee doesn't have that.
Okay, thank you very much, so with, with the saying that, if the, if the committee can't direct staff to notify the pub. What's the harm in deferring this part of the report till the, till we direct the staff to notify the pub now?
So I think the, the question and maybe, um, maybe I, I might just, can I rephrase the question? For you to, to give us some clarity in going forward. It appears, um, that's noted through the report, the decision related to this intersection is, sits with Transport for New South Wales. Because it relates to traffic lights, because of the intersection there, um, it relates to. Transport for New South Wales that make the decision, so the question would be, because we're not approving anything. We're just noting that this was the decision of the traffic, this was the, the information at the traffic committee, so I suppose. There, there's two questions to ask is, is there any benefit in deferring the report to provide? To allow the, any affected businesses to, um, provide feedback. To Transport for New South Wales, or can we just have a dot point that, um. Asks that the business be notified and, and provided, provide them with information of how they can provide that. Information directly to Transport for New South Wales, because if they're making the decision, do we need to defer it or? Is the, the outcome the same either way? Um, and so maybe I'll just, that, I don't know, it was a long-winded question to the director, but, um, hopefully he understands.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, y- yeah, I can see how rephrasing the question sort of, uh. Simplifies it a little bit, um, I think as you said, the second point, um, you know, for notification. Um, maybe pause on implementation prior to notification, um, would make sense, but I'd see it unlikely. Given that Transport for New South Wales are the technical experts in the area, that, um, it's gonna make a difference to the outcome if we delay that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I just would really like, however you need to do it, that the notification goes out to the pub. Because I think anyone that owns a business would, would greatly appreciate being informed of these sort of changes that can directly affect them.
Yeah. Um. So point of clarification, councillor Hawkins.
Would our planning staff have notified, this is a, a planning procedure sort of thing, would they have notified? The hotel, it. You said you hadn't spoken to them, so.
Yeah, I think that was answered earlier, I mean, the, the, the question was unknown about them, the director was unaware of the specific notifications. Other than the public notifications, um, however, the, the information flowed on from the development consent. Which was publicly notified and then they would have been aware of, aware of that, so. Um. So councillor Burke has the floor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I think it's really important that we all have a look at page one hundred and twenty of the agenda. Because it clearly states there, approval must be provided by Transport for New South Wales. Uh, dot point two in the discussions from this committee, concerns were raised by the members regarding the removal of on-street parking. In the loading zone on Snape Street and the apparent lack of consultation with local businesses. The committee are aware of it, um, council don't have, um, the power to trump Transport for New South Wales. Unfortunately, it would be good if we could, um, though we can't, so the committee. That we're all saying pull this out and send it back to them, um, are aware of it, so we're not gonna highlight to them anything new. Cause the committee has talked about it, they're talking about the same concerns we have, um, so perhaps, Mr Mayor, if it's possible to add a dot point. Um, that a courtesy notification from council, not Transport for New South Wales, advise them of, um. The changes.
So that's a, we'll call that a foreshadowed, uh, amendment. So that, uh, yeah, that a courtesy notification from council to provide the hotel owners, um, of changes, um. Uh, and, uh, options for them.
Yeah, to, 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 to talk to Transport for New South Wales, because they're not gonna consult with council. They're gonna consult with Transport for New South Wales, who are the people that are going to approve this or not approve it. Um, so my understanding is that they really should, um, know that this is happening, if they don't know about it. However, council don't get to say yes or no, we, by, by, by leaving this in tonight, we're actually acknowledging. The concerns that the committee have already raised, which I would maybe misunderstand, but, um, councillor Hawkins is the chairperson for this committee. Your discussions would have been heard by Transport for New South Wales in the room then, that business had not been consulted. So by pulling it out, we're not really achieving anything, I think what we need to be is not, let's not wait for a month. Let's get a resolution on the books tonight that says, we're acknowledging the committee and their concerns. We're acknowledging that it's Transport for New South Wales, but we're also asking, uh, a courtesy reach out from council. Although we're not the approving authority, to let the pub know, the hotel, any other businesses that are around that need to know, that this is happening. Um, that means that we get, uh, movement tonight, um, rather than waiting another month.
Okay. Um, do you want the director?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, um, yeah, through you, you'll also note in the report that this is related to, um, development consent, um, in. On page one twenty, in the first paragraph, um, so when this matter went through the planning process, um, I. Not sure of the specifics, but there would have been a consultation period, um, and I believe in that process that. Uh, adjacent neighbours would have been probably directly notified, but maybe the director of planning can confirm. If that potentially would be the case.
Director.
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor, look, I don't have that information in front of me, but I'm ninety-nine point nine percent certain the hotel would have been notified. They're a direct neighbour, so they would have had access to the tran- transport report that said that this was gonna happen. And they had the opportunity to make a submission, I don't know if they did, um, regardless, the decision was made that that. Um, traffic treatment was, um, sufficient and the committees, you know, raised some concerns, but as we've all been discussing. Ultimately, Transport for New South Wales will make the decision.
Yes. Okay, councillor Groine.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, I have, um, actually been to a few of these traffic committee meetings. And what I've discovered in, in those meetings is, A, I can't get excited about roads, lines or signs, um. But there seems to be, you know, there, there's a good group of people in the room when, when these discussions are happening, police are involved. The state member is invited, I've only seen him there once, but, um. You know, th- these people are, are very, um, versed in, there's a rule for everything when it comes to roads, that's what I've learnt. And I just want clarification that we as council cannot put up one single sign unless it gets the tick of approval. From tra- Transport for New South Wales, is that correct? Cause that's what I gathered from having, being in the room when these meetings were happening.
Acting director.
Thanks for the question councillor Groine, um. Indirectly, I would say yes, um, because it's gotta go through the traffic committee process, which includes Transport for New South Wales. Um, they have a level of interest on certain things, um, signage on main roads more interest, signage on, uh, local roads less interest. So, uh, essentially the answer is yes, um, but their level of interest on said signage m- might vary.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, councillor Alson, have you got a question, yeah?
Two questions, ma'am, um, first one, the hotel was, might have been notified, we're not a hundred percent sure. Might have been notified when the DA went before council, was this plane of road available for the, the hotel to look at at that time?
Um, the director.
Yeah, uh, again, without the information in front of me, I can't, I can't definitively say, but they would have been required to submit a transport. Report, traffic and transport report as part of the DA application and that information would have been available to all of those people who were notified. So assuming that traffic and transport plan didn't change, um, from the time it was submitted. Then the, any person who was notified or any person who subsequently made themselves aware through the public notification. Process should have had access to that information.
Yeah, I, 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 I have to say as a councillor, I looked at the plans and I'd never seen that part, this, this road works in that plan. When I do, I come to council, the second question I've got then is, by delaying this one month. So that the council has the opportunity to talk to the hotel about the loss of parking and how they unload their kegs. Is that gonna delay the DA for McDonald's at all?
The. Director.
Uh, through you, Mr Mayor, well, the, the, the DA has been approved, um, they need to get approval for these traffic. Um, matters, I imagine they can go ahead and build their hotel and, uh, sorry, the, the restaurant independent of doing the traffic works. And they would just have to comply with whatever decision comes from Transport for New South Wales.
So, so, so what, what the director is saying then is that if we delay this one month to, to give the courtesy of talking to, to the hotel. We're not gonna stop anything happening for the ho- the McDonald's development, which has moved in after the hotel's already there, thank you.
I, I think the, um, the previous advice was, it's the same outcome. Because the decision's already been made by Transport for New South Wales. But then that was the, the referred to in the foreshadowed amendment, so let's just go through the amendment, um, process. Um, so we'll deal with, uh, councillor Alson's amendment, which is that the report be deferred. Um, councillor Alson. Sorry, is that the, um, just the traffic committee TC forty-six, um, be referred, so which is listed. Up there, um, so that's the, the, the rest of it goes through as in, endorsed as is. Um, so we'll vote on that, all those in favour of councillor Alson's amendment? Sorry. Councillor Moore's with.
Why, why, it's his question, sorry, it's late, I tried to get in quick enough, but if it's already been, the plans have already gone through. They've already accepted the plans, they've accepted the building going across the road. The planning's been involved, road transport's been involved, why are we going back again? The director's already told us that, that that's what's happened, it's all been ticked and approved and they all know, they've all been notified. Even the lady that had to get a fence built at the back for the headlights and all that was done, so obviously why are we going backwards again?
That, that is what the foreshadowed, um, amendment from councillor Burke refers to, which accepts the report. But notifies the, uh, the hotel of how they can contact, like, how can they can contact Transport for New South Wales about it? So for, so we're dealing with the, um, the, um, amendment from councillor Alson first. Those in, in favour of councillor Alson's amendment, uh, councillors Painter, Watten, Alson and Judd, those against. Councillors Moore's done, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. Uh, we'll now go to the, uh, foreshadowed amendment, which is, uh, an additional dot point at the end of the report. That, um, that, yeah, courtesy notification from council advised the hotel of the changes. Um, and options for, uh, contacting Transport for New South Wales. To discuss any. Changes they may wish to put forward. So that's seconded by councillor Sander, um, so we're now going, have you got a question? So, um, so. That's in addition to the original, so is that accept? Yeah, so is, is councillor Hawkins and, um, councillor Sander happy to accept that additional dot point? As part of the original. Motion. Yes, so it now becomes the motion, um. And councillor Alson speaking on.
Yeah, yeah, ma'am, I, I just find this very disturbing that we're gonna wipe our hands of this, of this whole issue. Without having spoken to a business that's gonna lose parking, it's like Wallonby Road again. Here we go, just, let's talk, let's not talk to the, to the business that's gonna be majorly affected by a McDonald's development that's going in. The developer gets their way and gets what they want and the existing, the existing business is being left high and dry. Now, at the, we heard councillor Hawkins say that they were aware that the hotel was, was gonna lose parking and they, and they haven't. They were notified of all these issues, that at the meeting that there's problems for the hotel, yet Transport New South Wales went ahead with it. Well, I'm sorry, but councillor Hawkins voted for it as well because he has a voting right. And our state member voted for it as well because they have a voting right at that meeting. Transport New Sa- Transport New South Wales might be the governing authority, but here we are, we're gonna do a courtesy notice verification from council to advise the hotel owners. The changes are gonna happen, you're gonna lose your parking, go and talk to Transport New South Wales, it's got nothing to do with us, great. We look after our, our businesses in this town, that's what we're saying, thanks very much.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, um, the, washing our hands couldn't be further from the truth, um, and councillor Alson's actually on this committee. Um, so if he actually went along, he could have voiced his concerns.
Point of order from councillor.
Alternative, I don't get a vote when councillor Hawkins is there, so what's the point of being there if I don't get a vote?
Not a point of order.
We can cer- as, as councillors, we can, uh, we can certainly attend, um, committee members, uh, committee meetings, um. You know, and I encourage councillors to, to get, actually get along to them, um. I actually was one of the co- councillors that voted against this DA, uh, for McDonald's because I had concerns with traffic, uh, issues. Um, I certainly didn't put forward the foreshadowing motion due to washing our hands, it actually hurries things along. Um, we don't have to wait a month, uh, we're going to advise the hotel owners, council don't approve it. And I'm not quite sure why councillor Alson can't get that through, um, his mindset, uh, because it says in the report, we don't approve it. Um, so let's, uh, acknowledge that the committee has stated that they are aware. Of their concerns, their issues around the loading zone of Snape, uh, Snape Street, uh, traffic. Uh, or Transport for New South Wales, we're in the room at the time, by us delaying it a month achieves zero. Um, and for those that have been on council a long time, should not put that fear into the, into the community, that we're just. Washing our hands and not supporting a business, uh, what's now formed part of the original motion expedites things. We're going to have council contact the hotel owners, uh, to advise them, uh, of the changes. Uh, and unfortunately, Transport for New South Wales are the authority, we, we can't approve it. By voting on this tonight, we don't approve anything, we're just ignoring, we're acknowledging what was discussed at that meeting. This is not a decision from us that is going to go ahead and unfortunately councillors like to put fear into the community. With false statements, um, and that's not what this council's about. We are certainly, um, here to support businesses and that's why I put forward that council contact the hotel owners. Rather than waiting for another meeting of the tra- uh, the traffic committee, which would be in a month's time or something like that. So it could end up being two months before it comes back to this council, so luckily enough, some common sense prevails. And we're going to contact the hotel owners sooner rather than later, um, and acknowledging that this is Transport for New South Wales. And that's who they're not to talk to.
No further debates, uh, we'll now put the item, all those in favour, uh, councillors, Moore's done, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill. Hawkins, Painter and Saval, those against, councillors Watten, Alson and Judd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, now move on to report BN thirteen twenty twenty-three, um. Moving that way, councillor Grine, um.
Thank you, ma'am.
Seconded councillor Sander, speaking councillor Grun.
Uh, thank you, Mr Saval, um, I'd like to move this motion that council requests the general manager to investigate. Sensor lighting options, including solar powered options to improve safety at Bridges Hill Park. And other parks right across our LG, LGA, that council investigate grant, uh, programmes. Or funding opportunities to allow for these upgrades to be included into our delivery programme.
That was seconded by councillor Sander. Any further debate?
Thank you, ma'am. I I I'm last month I I put a motion up, but I I already knew that we could we could um you know. As councillor Olson stated, you know, where are we going to get the money from? I'm not asking for the money to come out of the general funds. I'm asking to go and 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 see if we can grab some grant money to fix some of these safety issues around our parks. And and as stated in our financials, where, you know, forty five percent to fifty percent of our budget comes out of grants. So all I'm asking is that we try to go for as many grants as we can to improve not just Bridges Hill Park, but all our parks across the LGA. Thank you, ma'am.
Councillor Jurd.
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to ask a question on this notice of motion. August sixteenth, we had a PE twenty eight slash twenty twenty three come to council to discuss the fifty thousand dollar worth of colourful lighting for Currys Rotary Park. I said then about how annoyed I was with that report spending fifty thousand on miscellaneous and tourist fund. When I'd asked council to look at safety safety lighting for the staircase on Bridges Hill Park and the football field car park on Mount View Road. Um I'm just wondering, is this going to include the staircase? For the safety lighting that you know the motion is.
Um thanks councillor Jurd. I I um with in regards to the curry curry lights that that I put a NOM up about. That was about um you know, getting money from tourism fund for that lighting to activate our town centre. With nighttime markets. That's what that motion was about. And and I heard you loud and clear and I hear, you know, a lot of residents about our parks and, you know, every day. They they're walking past saying, oh, we need a light bulb fixed or or or, you know, we need this happening for our parks and we have so many parks. What I'm saying is we should and and that money, that 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 money.
Is this an answer or is this a?
I I think she's missed my point. I'm I'm sorry councillor Grine, but I'm not actually going back on that. Just to refer to back in August sixteenth, this is the um conversation about it. And I just was wondering, does your notice of motion cover the Bridges Hill staircase? Because that's what I was talking about.
It actually says um improve safety at Bridges Hill Park and other parks across the LGA.
Awesome. That's what I was just wanting to ask. Okay, so um that's good to see people listening. Um but I don't know, okay, hang on, um because you answered the other question that I had, which was the uh the funding's going to come from grants. Well, I hope we can get them. Um but other than that, this notice of motion is going to, if it's going to achieve the safety lighting. That residents did ask for, I can support it. So thank you.
All right, councillor Moore's here.
Thank you, ma'am. I was going to use the phone. Uh I'm I'm all for this because uh the duty of care of council really is safety uh for the residents. And also Bridges Park is one of them. The staircase uh in the winter is you need to see an eye dog to go up it. And also on King Street side and on the opposite side. So yeah, I think this is a shouldn't have been overlooked when it was built. Thank you.
Cue no further debates. Let's put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh put BN fourteen twenty twenty three. Uh moving that way is councillor Hill. Is it seconded? Councillor Grine, uh speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Miss Saval. Um this this NOM relates to a a request that came to myself and councillor Grine. In in our capacity on the Budai Quarry um community consultative committee. The the committee met recently in regards to um the quarry operators' attempts to um. Implement a road upgrade that they as a cons- which is a consent condition of their DA for their recycling facility. And they're encountering issues with certain requirements due to the fact that the the road down to their quarry is not the current priority of um Old Budai Road. It still exists um heading eastward and and the eastward direction only currently services three residential properties. And uh at least one of those residents um come to the meeting and 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 supported this request for the possibility of the road to be um road pro to be to reconsider. Um a change in the road priority would allow the upgrade of the road to be made a little bit more streamlined. Um so that the quarry operator can also make the road more safe for their truck drivers to use. Um I'm hopeful that possibly the traffic committee can take the feedback from this from the community and this committee on board when considering this decision. Um but if not, I will, you know, we can go back to the committee again and and we can pursue um any additional options that they have for that area down there.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, just in this um director's commentary here, it states the acquisition of property to realign the road. Or eh so the connection point is further to the west. Who's gonna, if we had to, if if you want to change the road, who's going to acquire the property?
The director.
Thanks for the question councillor Olson. Through you, Mr Mayor. Um I believe the reason nothing's been progressed with the property acquisition is relation to um biodiversity offsets in the trees associated with the acquisition. Um so but all costs associated with that would have to be worn by uh the people who need the right reprioritisation. It hasn't progressed to the point where we've even looked at that yet to understand the costs.
No, no, I wasn't asking about whose cost. Who who would have to pay for it? Who would pay for the acquisition of the land? Would it be the developer or the council?
Yeah, uh ye- yes, essentially. So this this request has come through from the community to look at the reprioritisation. Um we'd have to understand how we can do that and then who's responsible for uh the steps required. And then the costs associated with each person's responsibility. Because we don't have a solution yet, we haven't sort of identified to break down who is and isn't responsible and what costs they would have. But yes, the people that brought this to our attention would be responsible for costs.
Yeah, because what I'm trying to work out, if the if it's Daricon, I believe, that owns the property in there. They have a DA for their uh to to use that road and and to use that to work in the quarry. How can you put a new uh condition on them if it's not already in the conditions of their consent? We can't come back and revisit and put a new condition on, can we?
I think councillor Hill may have some information he'd like to share in regards to your question.
I can perhaps help to answer the question maybe councillor Olson. In the there's two DAs we're currently dealing with down with this road. The original DA is the um consent for them to operate the quarry, which has a condition that they are responsible to upkeep the entire road that they use for their quarry. And when they applied their new DA to run their recycling facility, the concrete crush type thing, they had a condition. They basically put their hand up and said, look, we're happy to take on a condition there to re- to seal the road. Because they want to, they they likely want to increase the amount of truck truck and truck movements on it. Um and from what I've understood in my discussions with Daricon, they seem to be aware that they would incur the cost of acquiring the land for the road to be changed to moved. And they would also then have to offset any of the environmental impact, were they to cut down trees to build a different intersection further to the west of where it is.
It's it's it seems it seems strange to me that what I'm hearing here is that. That they've got, they've agreed that they've got to keep the road sealed and et cetera, et cetera. And now they're going to change the road. They they're happy to change the road. If they're happy to change the road, why do we need to do anything? Why then just go and do it?
The current the current situation.
I just don't understand what we're, what why you have to bring a motion to council is that if Daricon's happy to change the road, that they they should be talking to council and getting it done.
And so we're not debating further across each other. You'll get a chance to uh have your right of reply. Councillor Olson's.
Yeah, I I I'm so I'm sorry, but I I just I just I I just don't understand how a developer, if they if they've got a condition of consent. And they've got conditions to abide by and they're abiding by them, there's not much we can do if they're doing what they're supposed to do. I I understand where the residents are concerned and I understand this and that, but we haven't progressed anywhere with it. And we get hearsay from different people. I haven't seen anything in writing to say that Daricon's quite happy to do that um if or to do anything. But the director's commentaries are are concerning to me. Um I certainly do worry about how trucks and local traffic use that type of road. Um and I I've I've had dealings with um Daricon over the many years with council. And I've found him one of the better developers to deal with and one of the better companies to deal with over the years. So um yeah, maybe they'll tell you one thing and do something else, I don't know. But I look, I'll I'll support the motion, but I'm just, I just don't want it to be at any cost to council. And it's is also at the end of the day, it's Transport New South Wales again, that we can't make the decision.
Thank you. Um councillor Hill in closing debate.
Thank you, Miss Saval. Um yeah, the I I I guess I'll give you the the little bit more background as to why we've we got to this current position. The 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 stage that we're at at the moment is reflected by both Daricon as the quarry operator and the community members that attend this community meeting. Is because the trucks leaving the quarry going out onto Old Budai Road, they do not have priority, which means it is an intersection. And they, when they upgrade the road from gravel to sealed, they will, they are required to make that intersection meet certain standards for line of sight. So they can need to be able to see to the left and to the right when they come to that intersection. Um and their current situation is that the that the conditions that are likely to be imposed of them when they do that intersection is is called making it very difficult for them to pursue. That course of action. Um this is the current sort of most preferred option that they've put forward as a as the uh consultative committee with the members and Daricon. If this, of course, is knocked on the head by Transport due to some, you know, by the book engineering standard. Daricon's then next step would likely be that they may perhaps pursue um the modification to their recycling facility. Um application to remove the upgrade of the road, which then removes their their issue, their current issue that they're having in terms of the intersection. Um and then worst case scenario, if we can't come to some kind of agreement across the traffic committee and across the development conditions. It may well be that they end up at the point where they may need to withdraw um completely from this, what I think is a pretty beneficial um application and development down there. To provide our community with more resources for road repair.
No further debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Um report BN fifteen twenty twenty three. Uh councillor Grine is moving um an amended version of of this.
Yes.
So moving it as, I don't know, do you want to read?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mayor Saval. The um I'm just going to make an amendment to this, that council expand the investigation and design scope. For RRL twenty twenty four dash zero one seven, Road Rehabilitation Investigation and Design. Adams Street, Head and Greata, to include the section of Adams Street between Earp Street and Stamford Street. As well as the section of Young Street between Main Road and Adams Street.
So it's moved uh by councillor Grine, seconded uh councillor Burke. Uh speaking, do you want to speak on that? Councillor Grine.
A- as stated before, we we know that there's no that there's no money um. For for what we want to do, but we just want, we we want to make it clear that we want the investigation. That when we do come across going for grant money for this project, that we try to include this for the people of Head and Greata. To get thi- this works semi-done, whatever we can do, whatever grant money's out there, we're happy to take it to improve the roads. Thank you.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, ma'am, I I I'm a bit uh put back by this motion because the source of funding, it says to be termed in a further report. Now, if we as councillors have put in motions before, we're supposed to have a source of funding if you're going to need to spend any money. But then it also says funding could be taken from alternative local projects. That depended on source of funding, that may need subsequently be reprioritised to allow for a more complete scope for this project. Now, look, Head and Greata, I hundred percent agree that we need to be doing more on Head and Greata roads. But go and talk to the people in Melbourne Street or Countryway Street in Aberdeare and ask them about their roads. Go and talk to them in um go out to uh Millfields, go out to Paxton, go at Elalong, go go anywhere and and there'll be people wanting roads. If the Ward D councillors.
Councillor Hawkins, councillor Hill.
If the Ward D councillors want to fund this out of the out of local projects, take it out of Ward D. Don't take it out of A, B or C. And don't look at the next budget and say, we're going to take more funding out of A, B and C's roadworks and put it down in Head and Greata. Give up something. Go and tell people in Deacon Street, you're not going to do them and and we'll do this in Head and Greata. I'm sure they'll be happy. But what we got to do is we've got to prioritise and get the right the right roads and get it the the best buck for our dollar. And by bringing in motions like this, we're changing our plans without any having any funding and saying, let's change alternative pro- local projects. If you come to Ward B and start taking money off some of my roads, I'll be jumping up and down. And I'm sure Ward A and Ward C will be doing the same. So Ward D, get your heads together and work out what you're going to give up to do this.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Miss Saval. I I felt myself agreeing with councillor Olson's uh points here on this item. And um in fact, the the I've had quite a strong look here through the operational plan at the ward specific ones. You know, you might, if you were to, if I were to throw my iPad up here, I could show you that all the Ward D ones in each section are a highlighter, just for my reference to go back to back and forward. And when discussing this notice of motion with councillor Grine, I I've done, I dug through the delivery program items specifically in road rehabilitation. To try to identify anything that I could think that we could re- use to re- reprioritise. And unfortunately, with the current position of the operational plan, we've either got quite a lot of ish uh items that are currently being funded for investigation. Which I thought was unreasonable to take an investigation away from one thing just to expand a different investigation. And or we're we're, we have a number of projects that have progressed to the point where they are being implemented after many years of design and investigation. And I thought that would be also be extremely unreasonable to take money away from a drainage upgrade that spent five years in the in the works. Just so that we could try to expand the scope of this job. And um I think it's it's good to look at the um director's commentary, the the feedback that come back and also my subsequent discussions with the director on this item. Um regarding the fact that what may have started as a request to fully expand the scope of delivery of of works in this area. Should instead just be expanded to include the um further design works. Because the reality is, we may get to the point where these designs are done and we do not have sufficient funding to do the full section of roadworks. But while we are doing the design currently, I think it's sensible to expand the design to include what is needed to be done from the consistent feedback I've had from from the residents in this area. As a consequence of the traffic light project. And even if this design work is done for the full stretch and the money doesn't cover the full pl- um area. I think it would be good that we've got the plans there for when any opportunity that further funding arises.
Councillor Moore's.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh I agree with councillor uh councillor Olson on this, that uh Ward B needs everything it can get. But uh councillor Hill, I'm quite prepared to buy your traffic lights at Head and Greata because we're going to need it on Wallonby Road. But uh yeah, I think that we we have to sort of look where we're going to start spending money. And you can't just leave everything uh not being done and the rest all being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Burke.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to talk really, really briefly. I wasn't going to, but I was in a meeting um a a little while ago. And the general manager um mentioned at that meeting, uh if I'm a general manager, uh say that, you know, we've we've got to stop looking at small jobs. And while we're there, looking at expanding it, while we're there, it's better bang for our buck long term. And we did that on Sandy Creek Road, oh um sorry, uh Wallmore Road, so heading out. Look, we've got to stop thinking small and go, while we're there, why don't we just expand that? Uh and it's not going to put us uh backwards, uh it's going to get us forwards long term. And I think that that forward thinking that our great general manager has, has filtered down to uh councillor Grine. Because that's what this notice of motion is about. If you don't support forward thinking uh in this council, then you'll vote against this. But I think that we've got to stop looking at small projects uh and rather than going and doing a little bit now. And then we'll come back in five years' time, we'll do a little bit then, and then we'll do a little bit in another five years. Let's look at it now. That's not cost effective way of doing um it. Uh we've been doing that for some time and we're slowly seeing that uh turn of change or change of turn. To make sure that we are looking at bigger scopes of works, so we're making sure that we're not having to revisit things in a short amount of time. So councillor Grine, I'll hundred percent support this.
Thank you councillor Burke. And um yeah, it is just worth noting, reminding councillors that the the notice of motion that was circulated. Has been amended tonight. It's a a different notice of motion. This isn't committing to do the full works in that area. This is just saying, while we're doing the designed works, do the design works for the full area. So that should future funding become available for works to build. Works to build, uh then the design's already done uh in stage one, so um councillor Olson, you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question, I I just wanna ask councillor Burke, he's he said that um the best thing to do is while we're there, just continue the. The work we're doing and build bigger and bigger, can he support Mount View Road getting completed, not just doing a little bit?
Sure, that's a a question with councillor Burke, I'm sure anyone uh would support works that we have uh planned for.
He's not gonna answer, he's not gonna answer, well, he said we're gonna extend our works, why don't we extend?
He said I'm not gonna answer. Sorry?
Anyway, councillor Burke has the floor.
Deer in headlights, you are.
Councillor Burke has the floor.
I'm I'm fine, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll take that on notice.
Okay. Um councillor Grine in closing debate.
Uh thank you, Mayor Saval, um. Uh uh can I just say that, you know, I'm putting up notices of motion. Um and yes, I am a Ward D councillor and at no point have I asked anyone here, any councillor here. Or any director here that we take funds away from any planned works. At no stage have I asked for that to happen. If anything, I want to expand on the works that are there, like our current council is doing. Which by the way, we have completed record amount of works for the first time ever on this council and we should be proud of that. And as a Ward D councillor, isn't that my job to fight for my community? Is to put things like this up, is to actually, is to actually be representing the people of Head and Greata.
Councillor Grine, there's a point of, point of order from councillor Olson.
Councillor Grine said she never said anywhere about taking funds from anywhere else, it's in the in the report here, funding could be taken from all alternative local projects, it's in the report, she just said it. She just told us a lie.
Councillor Olson. I don't know, point of order, councillor Grine, please read it, councillor Grine.
Thank you, Mayor Saval, I've I have got an alternate motion up here councillor Olson. And I am here to do a job and that is to represent the Ward D um community as well as the rest of the LGA. And as you can see, the other motion I put up was for all parks, not just for Ward D. So thank you very much, that's my job and that's what I'm here to do.
No further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's uh councillors Moore's done, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval, those against councillors. Olson and Jurd, I'll declare it carried, uh are there any councillor reports? Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just uh moving two reports on behalf of councillor Jackson, um the HVWT uh. Alliance from Monday the fourteenth of August and the Huddlewater Customer and Community Advisory Group, CCAG, on Tuesday the fifteenth of August. She's asked that they be moved on her behalf.
And so you're tabling those reports, um. Uh, we'll now close the meeting.